Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association's School Board Liaison, Philip Middlemiss. Thank you.
Okay, so we're reconvening the open session and we have a report outcome close session.
Okay, on item C1, I have the following to report. The governing board acknowledges receipt of a copy of the letter of notice to certificated employees listed in Attachment A that his or her services will be reduced or not be required by Eureka City Schools for the 2012-2013 and except as otherwise provided by statute, no probationary or permanent certificated employee with less seniority will be retained for the 2012-2013 school year to render services which any of the certificated employees listed in Attachment A are certificated and competent to render. On item C2, it will be acted on in open session. Items C3 and C4 will be in closed session after open session.
And we have the pledge of allegiance from students from Zane Middle School.
Good evening. Students come on up. We have four students representing us here tonight. They're all great scholars. Francim Aguilar, Sophia Frank, Emily Evans, and Raymond Zhang. And Raymond will lead us into pledges.
All rise and face the flag, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Or it kind of feels more like good afternoon due to daylight savings time. But anyway, my name is Raymond Zhang and I'm a student at seven, or I'm a seventh grader at Zane Middle School. I am in jazz band, student council, and have maintained a 4.0 GPA since the beginning of the school year, which means I've had straight As the entire school year, which is a quite amazing feat if you ask me. But anyway, I'm here today to talk to you guys about student council. Student council is a great organization composed by us four and many other students, all led by Mr. Katab. Is Mr. Katab here today?
No.
All right. But Mr. Katab is a really great guy and I think he deserves some acknowledgement. But anyway, student council is this great group that helps unite our school. We host many events that try to, you know, unite our school more, I guess. Anyway, sorry. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had our own talent show which portrayed many people's talents. Even our own Emily and Francim right here, they did a very great job. But even though only three people won, everyone felt like a winner because everyone was so supportive of them. They all clapped, cheered, everyone gave them high fives, pats on the backs, fist bumps. But everyone felt like a winner. And the people who auditioned even felt great because they got out there. They showed that they could do something and they're not afraid. So that helps their self-esteem a lot. Our student government also helps by trying to unify our school with spirit days. Spirit days are when people like dress the same, do activities to try to make everyone feel like there's one group that we all belong to. Just last week on Friday, we had our 70s/80s flashback day, which I'm sure all of you are from. So everyone tried to dress like they're from the 70s or 80s, do a little funky dance. Anyway, but now every Friday, every other Friday, we're going to do another event. I believe we have nerd week coming up soon where we dress like nerds and like, I don't know, red or yellow are school colors for the Falcons. But we're also trying to start a litter campaign to help clean up our school and save the earth. By litter campaign, I mean, you know, recycle. It's like a couple of feet away, you could just put it in there, maybe even try to shoot it, but make sure you pick it up because not everyone has good aim. But in the end, I'm pretty sure we're going to make this year better for everyone. Now hopefully next year we'll also have another student government because seventh graders, I'm the only seventh grader here by the way, they're all eighth graders. But anyway, all the seventh graders in student government are now getting seasoned. So next year, we'll be the big dogs, we'll be the leaders, we'll be everything that people want us to be. We'll make our next year better and make everyone feel important to everyone. So anyway, I'm Raymond Zhang and thank you for letting me speak up here.
Well, I'm Emily Evans. I am an eighth grader here at Zane and I have a currently 4.0 GPA that I've maintained throughout the school year, so I'm pretty proud of that. And I am here to talk about jazz band and symphonic band and our music program. I've been in jazz band since seventh grade and it's a great program. I mean, it's, we go to tours and we are doing our jazz fest this weekend where we get to perform in front of Humboldt County and we get to tour the rest of the jazz band. And so jazz band, we do a jazz tour to the elementary schools to help, to help, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. We try and encourage children to reach our jazz band and join next year because we've had a minority of kids joining up into our band and music program. So I'm in symphonic band, which is the upper band for eighth graders mostly, but a seventh grader can get in if they're good enough. And the concert band is mostly for seventh graders. Our teacher, Mr. McKay, is really good at music theory and learning the whole thing about music. And currently, we are doing corrals, which we get to learn how to actually make our own music, which is really cool because, I mean, I can make a new song or make, put lyrics to it and become artists someday. Let's see. Off that topic, I'm in, I'm also in Algebra A, which is a kind of lower class for, it's a step up between pre-algebra and algebra, but it's a really fun class even though it's math and not many people like that. But I feel like it's, it's really good a step up between pre-algebra and algebra because some kids don't really know about that much stuff. And so it's about kids that struggle with those kind of subjects. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sophia Frank and I'm an eighth grader at Zane. I'm here to talk to you guys about the art program tonight. Last year when I was a seventh grader, I went into art and I can only draw stick figures, but by the end of the year, I could draw beautiful 3D pictures. Another thing I wanted to talk about was the remedial math program because I'm not the best math student and math is my elective this year. Last year, my GPA was 2.7 and this year, it's a 3.5. And that's, that's huge improvement and it's all in math. I really think I'm ready for Algebra I next year. In conclusion, Zane covers all academics pretty well and it's helped me in a lot of places. And I decided that I don't want art as a career, I want to do criminal justice and I hope to go to San Francisco State.
Hello, my name is Francim Aguilar and I'm an eighth grader at Zane Middle School. My four, I have a 4.0 average and my elective this year was technology. And I am here to talk about technology. Technology is very important because as you know, technology is growing every day and there's new technology. The projects we do in technology is acquiring Microsoft Publisher, Microsoft DreamWorks, Weebly, and making websites. The things we've done and the projects we've done in technology were History Day project and my History Day project was the Philippine Revolution documentary. We also do posters and what I did for my community service project this year was to advertise for Marana's Rescue. Technology is a great opportunity for you to learn the new, the new things happening here at Zane Middle School and to help out the community and to just learn how to do other stuff more faster and better. My math this year was Algebra I, which is a class above Algebra A, but even though that I'm above the others, I, I am still, I still encourage other people to be happy to be in Algebra A because Algebra A helps people from pre-algebra who don't know much about Algebra I yet to learn more and to improve better in math. My after-school and extracurricular activities are piano and voice lessons. And when I grow up, I want to be an artist or a choir singer and I want to go to San Diego Art Institute. Thank you.
Is there an adjustment to the agenda?
There's a minor adjustment to the agenda that I'd like to put the, under information, I'd like to put the superintendent's report ahead of the student reports. Other than that, no other adjustment.
So then moving to superintendent's report.
Okay. My first thing I want to say is, why did I have to go after them? There are amazing, amazing students. I'm sure that Zane Middle School is incredibly proud of the students that just came and spoke as we're proud of all of our kids. One of the fun things about being a superintendent is you, on occasion, you get to talk about very important people and very special people. And tonight, this is one of those opportunities. I get to introduce someone who has always considered students first, is a team player, loves to collaborate and communicate, and works incredibly well with all the people that he comes in contact with, has a strong tie to our community, also has children that we hope will come to our schools and our community. And in particular, I'm very pleased to announce him as our next superintendent starting July 1, and that is Dr. Fred Van Vleck. If I could ask him to stand up, please. Then I'm going to ask a couple of students first to come up as well from FFA. I believe they have something in particular they'd like to say to him because he has a strong ag background.
Nice to meet you. What's your name? I'm Lauren Grayban and I'm the school board rep. We just wanted to say thank you for being, well, featurely being involved in our program and we hope to see you in our future activities. Absolutely. Thank you. Well, let me first start by saying that I was actually a state farmer and a former ag teacher. So I think it's a state degree now, it's not state farmer, that's dating myself a little bit. But anyways, I want to start off by thanking each of you trustees for offering me the position. I am very honored to come here and very excited to come home. And as we, Leanne was talking about, bringing my family up here, family of five, bringing my kids up here, I'm excited about this. It's exciting to come back home and I'm very much looking forward to building on the very strong foundation that you have here in Eureka and working with the teachers and classified association and the administrators. And I'm just very honored that you have put your trust in me to be the next leader of Eureka City Schools and I am very much looking forward to the challenge.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, student reports.
Once again, my name's Lauren Grayban and I'm the Eureka FFA School Board Rep. So February's news, on the 11th, we had our CR Field Day where our teams did great. Our floral team had gotten first place, meats first place, forestry second place, dairy product second. And on the 18th, we had a regional officer interviews in Ukiah where I was interviewed by the officer team against 17 other members. I was slated for Humboldt Delmore Section Vice President and I was not slated against another one, but I'm now the regional office, but I will still be giving a speech down in Santa Rosa. And on the 29th, we have our, we had our sectional speaking contest where we had three participants from Eureka, Kelly Pedradie, Chelsea Gratz, and myself. Kelly had placed first in job interview, Chelsea sixth in job interview out of 19 people, and I had placed first in impromptu speaking contest out of eight other contestants. Now in March, on the 2nd and the 3rd, we had our career development contests at Davis. Dairy Products placed 5th, Meats 10th, Floral 10th, Specialty Animals 13th, and Forestry 3rd out of the state. We had our officer meeting this month and we had planned a few activities and fundraisers. So this month, we are having a tri-tip roast sale and if you guys are interested in buying a roast, just come down to the ag department. On the 9th and 10th, we are going to Chico for another career development event, which we did and we did great. Our teams placed and we did amazing. Tonight, we are having our FFA meeting where we are having corned beef and cabbage and we played Just Dance, Spoons, and Apples to Apples. We were having a game night to take it easy. And on the 23rd and 24th of this month, which is this weekend, we are having our spring regional meeting in Santa Rosa where Kelly and I will be competing in a speaking contest and seven members from Eureka will be receiving their state farmer degree and I will be running for regional office. And then also, Kelly Pedradie had been selected for our state interview committee for our future state officers and she had received, she had been placed in, for her specialty animals project, in the top three. And the Booster Club Dinner is April 5th. We look forward to seeing you guys there as you guys have a table. And we are very pleased for Dr. Dan, sorry, Van Vleck, the district, and we welcome him and look forward to the future involvement in the FFA. Any questions? A lot of information retained, I know.
What day is the pot roast, the tri-tip pot roast?
It's the 28th, so if you guys put in your order like this week, we can get it for you.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other student reports? There are none. Board member reports? Susan?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Fran?
I did have a couple of things and unfortunately, the young man who talked about litter left. But I did have a chance, or is he back there? I did have a chance to, to visit Zane a couple of times between board meetings this month and I did get a chance to speak with a couple, a number of teachers and I met the new counselor and I was very impressed with him, Trevor Hammons. There was only one piece of litter on the ground and I picked it up. It was an empty bag of potato chips and I put it in the, I did not throw it, I knew I would miss. But anyway, I put it in the way, in the garbage can and every time I go to Zane, I'm very impressed with how clean it is and, and I was there two or three different times when the students were moving between classes and they do a very good job of going between classes. There's not a lot of goofing off and grabbing hats or, and I didn't even see any hats, but that sort of thing. They just really were very well behaved and, and the teachers there are just outstanding.
Hank?
Hi, I would like to report that during our site visitation to meet Dr. Van Vleck at Siri's Unified School District, on the wall in his office is a certificate as an auctioneer. So those of you from FFA that know how it works, this is a guy you should put to work.
Wendy?
Wow. I was able to attend the Athletic Boosters Dinner at the Arcadia Community Center last with a number of our administrative staff. They had a table there and it was a lot of fun. It was, it was very well done. I was very impressed by the work that the group put into it and I don't have a total I'd like to know because I think they made a lot of money. It was a very good evening.
They do.
Okay, so now we come to public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. And we have three green sheets here, so we'll call them first. We have a lighting system so that when you begin to speak, the green light will come on. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will come on and your time is up when the red light is, comes on and we ask you to please stop at that time to give other people a chance to speak. So, the first speaker is Patrick Riggs.
As you know, I'm Patrick Riggs, president of ETA. Would rather be known as a second grade teacher in Alice Burney, but yeah, that's how things go sometimes. You know, I told you last week about the shirts and I know your concern about my wardrobe. This is the second one this week. You know, I've talked to you a lot about financial information the past couple of times and so I'd like to be maybe a little more philosophical with you this evening. It's, it's really not, I don't think, so much about money in the district. We have the highest beginning balance that we've had in many, many years this year. It's really about what we as a district decide to do with that money that determines what our situation is. I know that the board, in my opinion, and I've told this to all of the teachers, has acted with, I think, considerable respect to the community and the way that the board has gone about the hiring process for a new superintendent. And I really believe that you have really worked hard to bring someone here who is interested in community. And we think that's really important because we'd all rather be doing our jobs of teaching. But we have concerns. We have concerns when, given the end of the temporary jobs and the reduction in force notices and the non-re elect notices and the end of the categorical temporary positions, we have over a quarter of our members, our teaching staff, looking at unemployment come June 30th. We have concerns about that. We have concerns when we send a bargaining team composed of nobody but teachers who've worked here for many years, for the most part, to negotiate a contract and the district has a person there at $185 an hour who is yelling at the teachers, "Look at me, I'm the one negotiating for the district." That doesn't seem to me to be how you folks really want to run this district. We have concerns when we can't find $70,000 to assist our teen parents, when we can't find $70,000 to cover the insurance benefit increases for our members, but we have $1,900,000 sitting in a capital outlay fund for the renovation of a school that would be being reopened for the third time. So I'd ask you to consider your priorities and when you make your financial decisions and your employment decisions, I think that some things could be different. Thank you.
Next speaker is Becky Reese.
Okay, pressure's on. I have to read and look at numbers same time. Oh, it's already started, oh my god. Okay. I would like to speak on the topic of the principal revolving door practice within the district. For many years, this was a result of school closures, retirements, or layoffs. We are currently experiencing enrollment stability and I would like to strongly suggest that the school district look at keeping principals longer at the schools than the practice has been in recent years. Keeping a principal at a school site for at least four years allows families time to establish a relationship with them and create that bond that is so critical to a child's school success. I've seen an increase in disconnect between families and their loyal, local schools. That sense of loyalty and belonging is just not there like it has been in the past. I believe this is because families are not establishing a relationship with the school principal due to their frequent changes. We have been rotating principals so often, I feel too many parents do not even know who their current, current child's principal is. A principal is a glue that keeps a school together. They're the ones that set the tone at the school. I'm sure it's not just the parents that are feeling disconnected. If I'm a teacher, do I want to put time and energy and invest in a principal strategic plan when I don't know how long they're going to be there? In my opinion, you know, so many teachers deal with principals in and out that they must be feeling very isolated because they don't know how long they're going to have the support of their principal. I know there are a lot of factors that go into staff reassignment, but the current stability within the district, I think the district needs to take the time to seriously look at any changes that are made. As a business owner, I know it is not good for operations to move staff around on short-term basis. I look at what is the best long-term solution to my staffing needs and start there. The district needs to look at how they, how they can create the stability at our schools that they so desperately need. I don't think this practice of constant movement is in the best interests of our schools, our community, and most importantly, our children.
And Sean McLaughlin?
Aloha, Chair and members of the Eureka City School Board. My name is Sean McLaughlin, I'm Executive Director for Access Humboldt. I'd like to beg your indulgence, I have another, a staff member who can stand in for the three minutes for the video that I have to show at the end of my brief remarks, if that's okay. I know you have a protocol, so I want to respect that, but I do have a three-minute video that I'd like to share of highlights of student productions, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for that. As, as many of you know, Access Humboldt was formed in 2006 by the local governments. Actually, it was unanimous decisions by the county board of supervisors and the city councils of the cities in Humboldt County. And Eureka City Schools is a big part of that and I want to thank you for your leadership as an organization back in the founding days when you invited Access Humboldt to join you as you were redeveloping the Eureka Heights campus. And that's how our community media center came to be here at Eureka High School. We certainly see that now, a few years down the line, that the media center is serving all of Humboldt County while also advancing the mission of Eureka City Schools. As you may know, Access Humboldt brings outside and community resources from federal, state, and other sources to help fund capital improvements and the operations of our programs. For example, in the redevelopment of the media center, Access Humboldt funded the application and filing of the application that got the $600,000 of matching funds from state grant to match the funding for development of the media center. We also contributed an additional $100,000 of cash into that development. So we're very invested in the improvements that have been made and highly value the resource that we're building together with the schools. On a programmatic level, we also equip the facility and welcome you. If you haven't had a chance to come by lately, please come by the media center and take a look, especially recommend during fourth period when we have a lot of student activity in there on a pretty regular basis. We also bring programmatic support. We recently got a federal grant through, for broadband, sustainable broadband adoption that has helped us to fund additional instructor support to make that student engagement work better in the facility. And you'll be seeing a lot of the new programming coming up on the channel. So really, in sum, I think we see our role as supporting digital literacy and development of media skills, that job training and workforce development, and community service and civic engagement, which we think are all high-value activities that benefit both the whole community and in particular, the students and community that Eureka City School serves. So if you have any questions at all for me, I, I hope I center around my card and some information for you. Please feel free to talk to me anytime. Love to show off our facility and tell you more about what we're doing. And that, that concludes, we certainly look forward to working with the new superintendent, Dr. Van Vleck, and everyone as we move forward. So now with a little bit of help from my, oh, and I skipped in my process mentioning that we have one of our founding board members, Peg Gardner, who you may know from County Office of Education here. Office of Education here this evening, joined us. Kathy Cloney Gardner is a former board member from Eureka City Schools. Marcel Van Disso is currently the designee representing Eureka City Schools on our board. Our board is designed for that kind of stakeholder engagement in the community.
Access Humboldt plus Eureka City Schools equals next generation media. Access Humboldt brings community media resources, facilities, and programs to advance the mission of Eureka City Schools, maximizing all students' potential, inspiring them to be productive citizens, lifelong learners, and responsible participants in a global society in partnership with the community. Based at the Community Media Center on Eureka High School campus, Access Humboldt supports digital literacy, job training, and community service. From basics of video production, scripting, and editing, to more advanced lessons of research, writing, and effective communication. With opportunities that provide valuable experience, creating and delivering media projects to meet real-world expectations. Digital literacy and media skills, job training and workforce development, community service and civic engagement. Sharing messages and connecting students' media education with diverse perspectives that inform the process of lifelong learning. Empowering students to have a significant positive impact on society.
I attempted suicide, January 24, 2008. I was raped. Felt no point in living. Nearly 5,000 teens commit suicide every year.
All cigarettes contain butane, cadmium, stearic acid, hexamine, trilium, nicotine, ammonia, paint, fuel, methanol, carbon monoxide, arsenic, methane.
I spent my 13th birthday in the hospital in a coma.
local voices for our next generation.
In case you were wondering, and you might have recognized the voice, that was Denise Jones, the former interim superintendent who did the voiceover for us. Thank you very much.
Any other speakers on non-agenda items who didn't turn in a green sheet? With that, we move to the consent calendar. Any questions or concerns or a motion to accept?
I move to, pardon me, I move to accept the consent calendar. I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor vote aye.
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 None opposed? Motion carries. Moving to K-18, superintendent's contract.
I'll move for the approval of K-18 as amended.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second for, to approve the superintendent's contract? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And I guess Nikki, I think this. Well, that was quick. K-19, notice of completion, EHS Annex Marshall School Site Project.
The board has asked this evening to accept and approve the notice of completion for the Eureka High School Marshall Annex Project. Nine months ago, we accepted, you accepted the bid from Dan Co Builders. And within, oh, about two weeks ago, they finished their punch list and passed all of their tests. And so that contract has been concluded. We also are aware that the board is wanting an itemized accounting of all of the projects that were included in the building of this. And Mr. Ziegler and I are working on that as well. But tonight, what we're asking is for you to accept the approval of the notice of completion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the notice of completion for the Marshall Annex.
There's been a motion. Any, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor vote aye.
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 None opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item L-20, physical fitness test results.
Good evening. The school board has asked to receive a report on the results of the 2010-11 physical fitness test results. It is required that we make an annual report to the board. More detailed information is available upon request, but I did want to primarily provide you with a summary overview. And there are copies of this available. I'm sorry I didn't make enough copies for everyone. They're in color. The first graph shows the number of fitness standards achieved. You can see, starting at the left, the percentages of students who met none of the fitness standards. There are six. And over on the right-hand side, the percentages of students who met all six fitness standards. And this shows the different bars, the different colors are grade levels, grades five, seven, and nine.
Those are years.
There's four.
So that, for example, the, to the far right-hand side, the percentage of students, the green bar shows fifth grade, the blue bar shows seventh grade, and the red bar shows ninth grade. The far greater percentage of students at seventh grade met all six standards than did the other grade levels. That's how you would interpret that chart.
What's the purple?
Oh, did this get out of order? You're on the second sheet.
It's the second sheet.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That makes much more sense now. Thank you.
The first one. Okay, so we're looking at the one with three bars. Sorry about that.
Did the same thing.
Would you like me to repeat any of the information?
No, now it makes better sense without the purple bar.
What were some of the standards?
There, I could not tell you those right offhand. We've got people in the audience who could.
Some of them are number of sit-ups, how fast you can run the mile, push-ups. I know Joshua just did them.
Go ahead.
The six are, there's body composition, which is the height, weight, to the pressure. It's questionable. So the six components that the students are tested in is, they have a choice for cardiovascular fitness of running a pacer, which is kind of similar to what we might remember as a shuttle run, a 20-meter going on beeps, or a mile run. And then there is curl ups, similar to sit-ups, push-ups, trunk lift, body composition, which is basically their height and their weight. And, did I get six?
Curl-ups, push-ups.
Yeah, yeah. And flexibility, which is the sit and reach, or they can do a shoulder stretch. So.
So what was the expected time for like a mile run?
It depends on your height and your weight. Yeah, and so it is, interestingly enough, because of the way that the test is set up, the fitness gram test is set up, is that the heavier and bigger you are, the faster you have to run it.
And that just recently changed.
Yeah. It wouldn't be on this, this would be starting from this year, is what we're looking at, too. So based on those standards, it might even, we might see a decrease in the numbers of students who are passing.
So when I look at this, is it saying that only 27% of kids are passing this? Is, are the kids that unfit or is the test skewed? I mean, which, is it a combination of both or are you saying that the test is too difficult?
Well, there are many variables that go into creating the outcome. And so one of the things that happens is if you take somebody who's athletic or has more muscle base and is shorter, that person would be considered obese on the height, on the BMI. When in actuality, they're not obese, they're just shorter and very muscular. And so when you look at something that's like this and it doesn't line out every single factor of the test, then you're only looking at it as a whole. So it would be interesting to see how many people failed it because of their height and weight. So commonly, if you have a person who is shorter and has more muscle mass, then they commonly are not going to pass the flexibility test because they probably don't have very flexible hamstrings. And so those two kind of go hand in hand. So to look at it as a whole, it's hard to answer the question as to are they really not passing? Because part of the test is, in my opinion, it's not a very valid test for the height and the weight, the way that they do body mass index.
Is there another test or is this what we have to use?
It's the state mandated test.
That is what we have to, yeah.
This is mandated by the state for grades five, seven, and nine. And passing, by the way, is passing five of the six. So that when you look at the two columns to the right, five of six and six of six, and you add the percentages together, ninth grade, you would have 53% of students who would, according to the state guidelines, would be considered passing the fitness test. That was my question. Passing then is considered five of six. Okay.
Right. So the other factor is that some students feel that there's no value in attempting to pass the test. And so it's not that they couldn't pass the test, it's that they don't put any value on passing it and therefore just opt not to participate.
Or do minimal, or minimal participation because they don't see the value in it.
So are we, when I was looking through the paperwork here, these kids that aren't passing it in ninth grade, are they, do they have to keep taking PE until they pass it? Are we requiring that?
That's, yeah, that's part of the policy discussion, which is coming up. And the reason that I wanted to present these results tonight along with the policy so that we could see how they relate to each other. And we're going to get into that conversation, yes. The state law is interesting and it is complex, and we'll get into that real shortly.
Because that's a pretty big incentive to pass the test for a kid. I mean, if they know they're going to have to take PE the rest of the time and maybe they don't want to.
If there's, yeah, and that's going to be covered in the policy section. There's a lot of alternatives, there's options, a lot of ways to give exemptions to students as well. PE, 400 minutes every 10 days is in education code, it's required at every grade level, grade nine, 10, 11, and 12. And so the education code also gives school districts a variety of ways to grant exemptions from students having to take PE all four years. So we'll get into that conversation.
I think that was part of the reason why I asked if the kids were really that unfit or if the test was somewhat flawed. Because if the kids are really that unfit, then what we don't want to do is exempt them from becoming more fit. I mean, I think we want to try to encourage them to become more fit.
So if I could point out the next chart in your packet, please? Which is the one with?
With the purple?
The four bars that has the purple one. This shows, this shows a four-year trend. Thank you very much. It shows 2008 through 2011. So you can see in the past three years, the percentage of students at five of six or six of six standards has declined steadily. Stephanie mentioned the change in the test this year versus last year. So again, data can be whatever you toss out there. Has there been changes in these four years as far as what is expected of students and the test? Or is, are these four years consistent with the expectations?
There are always updates in the cardiovascular portion of the test because the Kenneth Cooper Institute, the institute that creates this standardized test, they're constantly doing more and more research. And so the time, it used to be time. So if you were 14 years old and you were a female, you were required to run it in between two certain times, nine and a half minutes and 11 and a half minutes or something. And then that time sometimes over the four years would change because of the research that had been done from year to year at the Kenneth Cooper Institute. And so we would get a new updated timeframe that we would tell the students, you know, we would spend all year prior to the test preparing them for that. And that did change. So from year to year on this chart, there could have been slight changes in the time requirements.
My concern is, are we comparing apples to apples or are we comparing apples to oranges sometimes?
Well, I think you're comparing a tangerine to a cutie.
Whatever that is.
Cuties are a little orange.
Same family, but.
It's a different variety of tangerine. So you're, I mean.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
It's close, but there are slight variations.
Okay.
I would also like to offer that in fifth grade, sometimes the scoring isn't consistent. And we've had new teachers in fifth grade and there are sometimes some scoring errors that can make some significant differences in how it's calculated. And I'd like to agree with what Laurie is saying, that because it is, you're dealing with large groups of human beings, that the testing is done differently by each person who's doing the testing. Some might be done in small groups, some might be done in large groups. The variation on testing, I think, has a lot to do with the actual outcome of the test. So there, you're talking apples and oranges.
In your opinion, Ms. Jackson, what?
She has to come up to this.
Back to the podium, please.
Now, we talked about the number of students or percentage of students that may not be putting 100% behind this. And we're saying 53% are at a passing level in the ninth grade. But could you just guesstimate the percentage that aren't giving it the full 100% effort?
20, 25% of ninth graders. I don't know the fifth and seventh grade. I couldn't. But that would be just a general guess, 20%.
And it's a variation on a theme as well. Like some people will give their all in an area that they feel confident in. And then they, then they just won't try in an area that they don't feel confident in.
I just want to be careful about reading too much into the data before we start talking policy.
Well, and I think that you're really smart to think that way because there are so many variables that go into this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the results of fitness test last year? Any other questions on the, uh, results of fitness test last year?
So with that, I guess we're ready to move on to L21, Board Policy Administrative Regulation 6142.7, Physical Education and Activity.
This policy is being brought to you because it was brought to our attention earlier in the school year that our current policy was 12 years old, or at the time it was 11 years old, and it was out of date. There were some questions, uh, put forward that the Eureka High School principal and I were not able to answer. So we did some investigating into current high school practice as well as board policy. And we realized that it was time to update the board policy and create some clarity around a lot of issues surrounding who takes PE, when, and why? And who gets exemptions, when, and why? So that's the attempt with bringing this policy forward to clarify a number of issues. And because of the complexity of this, it, it, it's interesting that, uh, a number of administrators have spent quite a bit of time going over this repeatedly, trying to figure out the nuances. So it, it, it may take a while to, to go through the policy. If it needs a couple of meetings for reading, um, that wouldn't be a problem either. I prepared a, you might say, a cheat sheet, a sort of a guide of the sections that are in this. This is a sections outline. And there's a few of these for our audience as well, which could be handed out. Thank you, Lori. So this outline just shows you some of the main topics that are taken up in the policy section as well as the administrative regulations section. And you might want to kind of keep that handy or to one side, use that as a guide. Because the policy that we get from CSBA, the model policy, as you're familiar with, it has a shaded box with directions or guidelines, information to us as, for us to consider. And then it follows with recommended language and with citations. So we'll, we'll jump into the policy, BP 6142.7. The very first is, has to do with instruction. The entire policy, I want to point out, is optional. And so it contains, uh, all of the different sections are optional. And it contains a, a lot of leeway for us to add language. When Mr. Jordan and I were first considering this policy, we asked the physical education teachers if they would like to have input and contribute. They did, uh, quite a bit of research, and I appreciate the amount of research that they did with, um, getting information from Los Angeles Unified School District. And Mr. Jordan and I considered their input and came forward with what we would call a hybrid. We've included some of the language recommended by the PE teachers, which you'll find in this policy, it's in the bold italics. So anything here that is in bold italics is something that was, um, that came from the physical education teachers that we incorporated.
Was that input just at the high school level?
Yes. It's, it's mainly at the high school level where we have so many different options available to consider. For the other grade levels, it's very straightforward. So the first section is simply a statement that the school board recognizes the positive benefits of physical activity on student health and academic achievement. And you can read the rest of the paragraph there. I'm not sure how, how quickly you would like to move through this. I'll move ahead, and if you want to stop me, please do so if you have questions. The, uh, the next section at the bottom of page 31 is a statement based on the voluntary physical education model content standards. A statement that the district's physical education program shall provide a developmentally appropriate sequence of instruction aligned with the state's model content standards and curriculum framework. On the next page, there again are optional paragraphs. The school board, as the, the guidance from CSBA indicates, the school board is obligated to determine whether to grant physical education credit for a particular course, including but not limited to junior ROTC, marching band, cheerleading, or drill team. But the model language that they provide is, is below this paragraph. The overall course of study for grades nine through 12 shall include the effects of physical activity upon dynamic health, mechanics of body movement, aquatics, gymnastics, and tumbling, individual and dual sports, rhythm and dance, team sports, and combatives. It is also within the prerogative of the board to approve other courses in grades nine through 12 for which physical education credit may be granted.
What do we do? What do we do for aquatics?
We have a lot of puddles, Fran.
I know we do have a lot of puddles. I probably went up on the roof of the, of the gym. But it always surprises me, that's one of, always one of the things in there.
Is that one that should say may instead of shall?
Well, one of the things that, if I can kind of chime in, is that sometimes students in the Center for Independent Study or Home and Hospital programs can, can go and do swimming at the Arcata Community Center and receive PE credit for those activities. So, um, it is an option that some of our students in our alternative ed programs choose to take, so.
But the other regular students can't do that.
Well, they could, but it would be difficult, but yeah.
Well, yes.
So we could change the shall to may?
I'm just confused a little bit. You're saying that the whole thing is optional, rather than just chunks of this is optional? As usual, when we get a board policy like this, certain things are not optional. So the whole thing is optional, so we can change that shall to a may? Shall we do that? May we do that? Shall we do that?
Will you do it? I don't.
I would, I would prefer to keep the term shall.
I would, too. May, they could choose to do nothing.
We're talking about the overall course of study.
Right.
Shall include, rather than leaving it unclear as to what we want in our course of study.
Can I approach the microphone? Can I say something?
Sure.
What's written in here is mandated by the state of California.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I mean, this is, these, this is in the standard, it's the, in the standards, the physical education standards.
So how do we meet that when we don't have aquatics?
Well, um, we haven't attempted to meet it other than the fact that we were trained in how to teach land-based swimming at a conference that we attended, wherein people lie on bleachers and walk strokes. We teach water safety and basic, basic, uh, the, the theory, the theory of-
Could at least do that.
Aquatics, but, um, you, it's, we can't really remove it because it's part of the standards.
So it sounds like we should reopen the high school pool.
Yeah.
Okay, state law, you heard that.
So what, uh, what would be the board's direction on the mayor of the shall?
So we need to leave in the shall.
Because it's state law.
Well, it says it's education code 33352.
So it needs to be shall.
Just leave it.
We'll leave it.
Leave it.
As long as we're doing that get on the bleachers and swim thing, then I guess we're covered, right?
Also, the, the bottom half, you see that the, uh, again, this is an optional paragraph for use by districts and may be revised to reflect district practice. And it states, "The district's physical education program shall engage students in moderate to vigorous physical activity as defined in the accompanying administrative regulation for at least 50% of class or session time. The superintendent or designee shall develop strategies to monitor the amount of moderate to vigorous physical activity that takes place in the physical education instructional program." Any questions? Students with disabilities shall be provided instruction in physical education in accordance with their individualized education program or section 504 Accommodation Plan. And at the, in the administrative reg section at the back of the ARs, there's quite a lot of language that addresses students with disabilities.
The 50% comes from where?
In the-
A nice number.
The shaded box, um, it, it, and I apologize, it's hard to read.
I can't read it.
The, it says, "The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, 2008 Physical Activity Guidelines for Americans recommends that children and adolescents participate in at least 60 minutes of moderate to vigorous physical activity per day, which can be accrued in smaller increments throughout the day. To help reach this goal, HHS recommends that students be engaged in moderate to vigorous physical activity for at least 50% of physical education class time." So that's Department of Health and Human Services recommendation.
Thank you.
On page 33, there is a small paragraph regarding air pollution episodes, extreme weather, or other inclement conditions, that physical education staff shall make appropriate adjustments to the program or seek alternative indoor space. Staffing, physical education instruction shall be delivered by appropriately credentialed teachers who may be assisted by instructional aids, paraprofessionals, and/or volunteers. The district shall provide physical education teachers with continuing professional development, including classroom management and instructional strategies designed to keep students engaged and active and to enhance the quality of physical education, instruction, and assessment. Any questions so far with, with that? The next several paragraphs are going to get very interesting, having to do with exemptions. And I prepared a, a handout that will help us, uh, hopefully, it'll help us, to navigate through this section. There's one for each of the board members in cabin, and I have a few handouts for the audience as well. The top row shows the required minutes according to education code, if there were no exemptions granted. The green sections, there's two green lines that show what might be the course of instruction for a student who passes the fitness test in the ninth grade. There's one option to be exempted during 10th, 11th. The other option is to be exempted during 11th, 12th. The yellow line shows a student passing the fitness test in 10th grade. And at the bottom shows that a student not passing the fitness test at all. Now, these outcomes in this chart reflect the language in this proposed policy and administrative regulation. So things could change in this chart. The way it plays out, it can change based upon some of the language. So I, I thought it would be easy to follow, to keep track of the language for the exemptions having this chart. So I'd like to proceed then with the, in the middle of page 33 is the statement that the superintendent or designee shall annually administer the physical fitness test designated by the State Board of Education in grades five, seven, and nine. Then we begin the temporary exemptions. The superintendent or designee may grant a temporary exemption from physical education under either of the following circumstances. The student is ill or injured and in a modified program, or the student is enrolled for halftime or less. Okay? Over on page 34, two-year exemptions. This is directly related now to the question that was put before us last fall that we were not able to answer in terms of what is our practice? Is it consistent with law or not? So here, um, is our intent to be consistent. The statement is, "With the student's consent, the superintendent or designee may exempt the student from physical education courses for any two years during grades 10 through 12, provided that the student has satisfactorily met at least five of the six standards of the state's physical fitness test in grade nine." And that's education code 51241.
So what is our current practice? Is, is that our current practice?
No, it wasn't.
What do we do now?
Our current practice, I believe, and Mr. Jordan is here, and he can, uh, at, at any moment, jump in, Rick. But the current practice is students take two years of PE.
Period.
Period. Because that is the graduation requirement of Eureka City Schools, is two years of PE.
Before we get to Mr. Jordan, if he could jump back a page, page 33. Superintendent, the designee may grant a temporary exemption. And I understand that ill or injured with a modified program. The student is enrolled one halftime or less. What students are we talking about that would be in that category?
Those would be students who might be in a ROP or work experience or, uh, just simply enrolled out of necessity for a limited day.
So like home, home and hospital or, or independent study?
Independent study, home and hospital.
That wouldn't be reflected in our continuation program? Full-time continuation, I believe it's 15 hours per week. But I'm not sure the, the clarity of that halftime or less.
So you're, you're, you would like to know exactly what is halftime?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The, would you be able to address that?
Well, just by simple math, you have three periods a day. Currently, at Eureka High School, I can't think of a student that we, is taking a halftime day. I could think of maybe some special education students that might be on a, a reduced schedule, possibly, that this might apply to. But for the, the vast, vast majority of kids at the, at the high school, this just doesn't come into play.
And I'm thinking of the alternative programs, obviously.
And, and they're, they attend for longer than a half-day. They, they have four periods a day.
Are they taking PE?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
So when I look at this chart, it seems like the, the biggest change to our current program would be really just for the students who do not pass the fitness test, that they would have to take three years of PE instead of two.
Well-
That is, the next section, if I could draw your attention to that, it directly answers your question there, John.
Right.
Can I move to that?
Sure.
Can I plug in, Rich, and answer the, the previous question? Before you move on, about, uh, do we currently offer exemptions? Uh, we don't have a formal process where a student has to ask for an exemption, say, going into their sophomore year. But we have plenty of students that will take PE their ninth grade year, pass the fitness exam, and then not take it in their 10th grade year or even their 11th grade year, and then finish the program in their 10th grade year. So currently, we-
12th grade.
12th grade year, excuse me. So currently, yeah, we have students who don't do PE continuously to hit their, their two-year graduation requirement.
But they take two years of it. Because they're going to get it 12th grade. So they're getting two years of PE.
Right. And we've talked before in these meetings about how impacted the sophomore year can be. And, and that's, that's one of the areas where kids can flex their schedule.
But currently, we don't, we don't have the requirement that they have to pass the fitness test in order to get that exemption. They're just given an exemption if they take PE both ninth and 10th grade. They don't, they don't ask for an exemption, they just don't have to take. I mean, there is no exemption for it.
We, um, this chart could be a tiny bit misleading. It's not the information about specifically- It's not the information about, it's misleading, but we don't have a ninth and 10th-grade program. We don't have the facilities to teach all ninth and 10th graders at the same time. So that's why the program is ninth grade is mandated by the state of California, and all ninth graders take physical education. And then they can choose, our students can choose to take a semester at a time throughout the 10th through 12th grade. So this is just a little teeny bit misleading, because they do take, like Mr. Jordan stated, they take physical education throughout their 10th, 11th, and 12th grade year. They spread it out and fit it in where it fits with their other mandated standard-based classes.
For a total of two years.
Right.
And that's because of graduation requirements.
Correct. Yeah.
But, but currently...
It's linear.
But currently, if they don't pass the test in ninth grade, we are not requiring them to continue to take PE until they pass the test.
Correct.
But we are not currently, correct? Okay.
So you can give them that, if they pass the test in ninth grade, you can give them that two-year exemption during 10th, 11th, or 11th, 12th. But the problem that we're faced with is that the minutes are required by Education Code. And so that if students don't pass the fitness test in ninth grade, then they've got to have PE at 10th grade.
It's just, it's a requirement in the ed code...
That's what I said.
...that they have to continue taking physical education until they pass five out of the six segments. And so they, they continue to take it. They should be placed in a physical education class the next semester, and given an opportunity to build their skills, and then retake the test, so they can see if they can pass the test. Then they can take their two-year exemption, that the Board of Education of Eureka City Schools voted upon in the 1970s. So, the four-year physical education requirement is now, for Eureka City Schools and most schools, is a two-year requirement. So they get that two-year exemption after they pass the fitness test.
Right.
So if it takes them all the way until the second semester of their junior year, then they don't get that year exempted.
Right.
So, like was mentioned earlier by someone, if students knew that, and we, and they knew that they would have to pass the standardized mandated test to be able to get that two-year exemption, I would think that the little bars on your chart would be really different.
So if I could draw your attention, please, to the permanent exemptions, the middle of page 34.
So it is true.
This is provided by Education Code 51241. It authorizes, but does not require, the district to grant permanent exemptions. So the, the attempt of the chart is to display how, even though Education Code requires 400 minutes of instruction in PE every 10 days throughout grades 9 through 12, there are a variety of ways students may be exempted from that. We've discussed the exemption allowed by passing the fitness test, and this is another one, the permanent exemption. The student age 16 years or older, and has been enrolled in grade 10 for one or more academic years. That is, that one sentence comes from the CSBA model policy. When Mr. Jordan and I were crafting some language, we threw in the additional phrase that students must apply for this permanent exemption during the second semester of their junior year, prior to the year the exemption will be in effect. So if we were to adopt that, that would be illustrated by the bottom row on the chart, that a student, let's say, would not pass the fitness test, and then during the junior year could apply for this, we can call it a senior exemption. It also is true for the second line. Let's say a student passes the fitness test in ninth grade, gets a two-year exemption for passing the test for 10th and 11th grade, and then after the 11th grade, gets the permanent exemption. So there's a number of ways to exempt students from having to take PE.
But the way that I read that sentence is that's only students that have had to, had to repeat 10th grade. It says, "If you've been in 10th grade for one or more academic years."
No, that means if you've completed 10th grade, so that a student who's a junior, upon becoming a junior and 16-years-old, then that student can apply for a permanent exemption.
Affecting their senior year.
And we, we can modify this language here. We could write it so that upon a student turning 16-years-old, they can apply for the permanent exemption. Mr. Jordan and I believed, when we wrote the, and you see it's in bold italics, that we believed it may be easier in terms of planning coursework...
I would think so.
...to have the student apply during the spring semester of their junior year for the permanent exemption as a senior. But it has been pointed out to us that that could cause hardships for a number of students. We have students who are young students when they go through their high school career. We have students who may not be able to pass the fitness test in the ninth grade. They take 10th-grade PE, still cannot pass the test, but they, when they turn, when they become a junior, they're still not yet 16-years-old. So we're kind of in an awkward place there, that maybe we would want to consider allowing students to apply for the permanent exemption as soon as they turn 16.
Why, I guess, I, what is our goal? What are we trying to achieve by what we're doing here? Are we trying to make it easier for them to take other courses? Because if what we're trying to achieve is physical fitness, then why would we want to exempt them if they can't pass the physical fitness test?
Well, I think, I'm going to chime in a little bit. I think some of what Stephanie said is that some kids, even though they're incredible athletes, their body mass is going to not...
Only one part of it.
No, but there's two. It goes together, body mass and flexibility. So if they fail both those, those sections, even though they're an athlete, they're never going to be able to pass the test. They could be getting As in PE.
Well, my son is really thin, but very muscular, and his BMI shit said that he was obese, and he passed the test quite easily.
I'm just suggesting that there are conditions that could be students that are excelling in PE, and yet are not going to ever be able to pass the fitness test for a variety of different reasons.
Well, then maybe, I guess what I'm saying is, maybe, maybe then, if that's the case, then there needs to be some kind of wording in there that says they're, they're not passing the test, but they are excelling in PE.
Right.
Or they have an A in PE, and they're, they're at, because we don't want to just, you know, we have a huge childhood obesity problem, and unhealthy kids. We don't want to just exempt them from PE because they aren't healthy. I think, as we want to try to...
Right. And that's when, when...
Encourage physical fitness.
Right. And then, and when staff was having some conversation, we were suggesting maybe students that were maintaining, I don't know, an A or B, so that indicates they are able to pass the standards in PE, but still can't pass the test. So there would be some criteria, that you have to be healthy based on the PE standards, but yet not held back because you can't pass the test, which could affect your ability to take A through G classes, it could affect some other things.
So I'd like to try to address your question, Susan. What are we trying to achieve here? Clarity, basically, even though, I know it seems really murky and confusing, but there was a need to establish a real clear policy for the high school, how we address the Education Code, and how we address the fitness testing. So I've, I've got to say that there are cost implications. If we, if we make decisions on behalf of, let's say, providing more physical education opportunities than what we're currently doing, there are cost implications with that. And so, one of the, one of the things that we can do with the policy and the administrative regulations is to clarify, how can we continue to be in compliance with state requirements while being as fair as possible with students without increasing costs? And so it's, we're trying to thread that path.
Well, Seans' past practices has been that, at some point, we decided that two years of PE was enough, all on its own, without any consideration of the actual health of the child. And have we changed that? Are we trying to factor in a, unless you are not physically fit, unless you are not able to pass this test? So there's questions about whether the test is any good in the first place. It seems to, seems, the feeling out there that I'm getting is that the test, the test is kind of worthless, the way it's done by the state, the way the state is telling you, you have to test these kids to find out whether or not they're physically fit or not. So is our goal to make sure that every kid that graduates from Eureka High School is physically fit, or has come to the best of his ability physically fit? Or is it that we want to let our kids off the hook from physical education by the time they finish the 10th grade? What's the goal? Well, and I think part of that is, I don't know how old, I don't know how, if this is a new ed code, or how old the ed code is, but I think part of it is that we made that decision, or that decision was made, to drop the two years, and that it's two years of PE. But then there's an ed code that says if they don't pass that test, they have to continue taking PE until they do. And so I think that's what we're trying to address, correct?
Yes, there are many ways to provide exemptions for students from having to take PE all four years.
Well, it sounds like we're looking for the loopholes to put in our policy, so that we can either allow that or not allow that.
So, on a more, go ahead.
And, and I guess just on a, on a more person-to-person level, is that the physical education department, when we were asked for input, we, we were not in favor of exemptions, and maybe that's why our policy didn't make it to you. I'm not sure.
So, on a more philosophical level, the mandated courses by the state of California include physical education. And physical education, just like every other mandated course, is a standards-based, required course, and we all sit at the same table. We're equal. We have standardized testing, we sit at the same table, and we, we're all academic. We teach, we have an academic fortune of physical education, that's why it's called physical education and not physical activity. So for us to even be discussing waiving physical education is so foreign to me, because why aren't we discussing waiving English? If someone can be proficient or advanced on their English STAR test, why aren't we waiving their English class? Why are we talking about giving students an opportunity to waive a mandated, standards-based course? It doesn't make sense to me at all. It makes sense on this side, that you would want to have kids be able to take other classes, but they're not mandated, required, standardized, tested courses. So I think that we all need to think about why we're waiving one of those required, standards-based courses. Why aren't we waiving all of them? Let's talk about a waiver policy for every course. And why can't a student waive their math class if they can take calculus when they're in 10th grade? Why can't they waive the rest of their math requirement? Why can't, I mean, so, we, why just physical education? Is my question.
So you're in favor of going back to the old four-years of high...
Not at all.
No.
I'm not, I'm not advocating for that one bit. I'm advocating for, have this kind of a philosophical thought form. I don't, does it, and I don't know, maybe this conversation takes place here about other subjects, and I'm just here for this one. Maybe you've talked about a waiver policy for another required course, where students who can test out of it, like you're talking about here. So, when you talk about having a student be a 10th grader and be 16-years-old, that you're going to offer them to petition to be able to waive a required, standards-based course from the state of California? You're going to offer them a petition to do it? Well, if you listen to the 7th graders who came in today, one of them, who has a 4.0, said she doesn't even like math. So if she had an opportunity to petition to waive her math requirement? There's a lot of kids who don't like other subjects who would want to waive them. So I'm just, I'm, I'm not advocating for four years, but what I am advocating for is that, is that we really look at what we're doing, and not make these broad, sweeping waiver policy that we're talking about. It's scary to me that one person at a school site would have this broad waiver opportunity for anyone who came forward and happened to know about it, and wanted to take part in it, and that one person would have the ability to say, "Yes, you can waive that." So it, we're not talking about an elective, we're talking about a required, standards-based course that has a standardized test that goes with it, and it's in the ed code. So, that's...
So you're not in favor of four-years of PE?
Well, I didn't say I wouldn't be in favor of it, but I'm not advocating to go back to four-years.
I wish you would advocate.
I wish you would, too.
I'm just advocating to really think about taking away what, the little thing we have left for these students. And all of us went through...
Four years.
A different kind of physical education.
Two years in college.
It's very different now.
Yep.
It's very, it's nothing like anything that any of us participated in. So, I really encourage you to really think about making this a big waiver policy. It's, it flies against all that's right in teaching the whole child. And we all understand how that works. So that's just my higher-level thinking, philosophical statement. Just really think about it on that level. So, thank you.
Just to summarize, very, very briefly, the Education Code requires four-years of physical education. The Education Code also allows school districts to provide exemptions for a variety of reasons, which are outlined in this sample policy.
Piggybacking on what Stephanie said, is there opportunity for exemption for students showing proficiency in English, math, other subject areas?
Not that I'm aware of. We have a policy for graduation, and, I don't know, if we have, at Eureka High School, the opportunity for students to waive out of some of those graduation requirements in English or math?
I'm not talking about policy. I'm talking about ed code.
Oh, ed code.
Because what we're talking about here is, ed code authorizes exemption for a standards-based, mandated curriculum. And there's a standards-based, mandated curriculum for English. Is the, does the ed code authorize exemption if we ascertain proficiency? I'm not talking about policy, I'm talking about ed code.
It would have to be based upon local policy. If we have a policy for graduation requirement in Education Code, there's minimum requirements for, for high school. I would have to research that.
Just speaking on a philosophical level. What would, what would happen if we just went to three-years of required PE?
Rick?
Because I, I think that Susan is, is right, and that we are having this philosophical debate, and what we're trying to do is, I think, is to get some direction from the board as to how we want to move forward here. We do need some clarity, as, as Rich is saying, but flexibility here is, is really important. There are kids that are on both sides of the academic performance spectrum that would be, that would benefit greatly from this flexibility. If we have a, a second-language student that is coming in, and they're, say, CELT Level 2, and they come to us, and they enter the high school, and they're doing the edge curriculum Level B in their freshman year, and they're taking two periods of that, along with PE in the freshman year, and a, and a science class, and an elective, they get into their sophomore year, which becomes more impacted, and we put them into edge Level C, and they're, so they're taking sophomore English, the equivalent of sophomore English, and the support class that goes with it, and, and then they're in history, and a science class, and maybe a foreign language. It becomes very difficult for those kids to be able to do all those things, whether it's a second-language student, or an English-only student that is in a English class with a, a support class... And whether it's a, a second language student or an English-only student that is in a English class with a, a support class or Algebra I class with support. When we, when we design program in the district, we've been, we've put a lot of time and energy into addressing how to take kids that are not performing at grade level and give them the support they need so they can take a grade level class. The reality of that is that they are taking these, these course loads that give them very little flexibility to, to take either PE or a CTE class, in some cases, a second language class. And, and it becomes difficult to, to get any of those programs into their schedules. On the other end of the spectrum, a sophomore, for example, that is, is in jazz ensemble and AP World History and Spanish 2 and da, 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 they're taking a six-period, maybe seven-period day that's very impacted. And they don't, and they choose not to take PE. These are kids that the board has given us very clear direction that we want to continue to support. We want that college-going culture. And last night at the, the college night, we were looking at the, the average GPA for a student going into UC Santa Cruz is a 4.0. To be able to be competitive, for our kids to be competitive at that level, they have got to take enough of the AP courses to, to have that kind of a GPA. And so we're at this philosophical decision over what is, what is the real intention of the, of the board and the district when it comes to the students that we are, that we have responsibility for. And it's a tough one. Physical fitness, rigorous academic program, strong intervention program. I think that's why we're asking you for some, some direction. Because we're struggling with how best to create this balance and maintain the kind of flexibility so that we can support kids that are not at grade level, continue to push kids that are on a rigorous course of study to, to be competitive in the UC system, in the CSU system. And, and the flexibility, especially for the kids that are, that are on those rigorous courses of studies, comes with PE. We have a number of kids right now that take PE through BYU, the online program. Parents pay $130 to take a semester course. They do it in the summer, two summers in a row, so that during the school year, they can take the range of courses that we're offering at the high school and, and get the kind of training or, or take the academic rigor that we've got, we've got available to them. So it's a tough question. Without a doubt, it's a tough question. And, and we're struggling with it. And that's why we've, we've gone back and forth as we've looked at this policy as to what is the, the real intention. And when we look at, at board goals, I think the, the weight of those goals right now really fall on the side of intervention programs, supporting kids that are not at grade level and maintaining that college-going culture.
So, um, are you, when I look, when I look at this, I'm trying to figure out what you're asking us to do differently than what we're currently doing. What we're currently doing is two years of PE and the second, that one thought, that one semester is out there and kids take it when they can take it. They take all, all year 9th grade and then they have one semester, then they have another year to, to fit around. That's what we're doing right now, currently. So if, what, what this looks like to me is we're talking about, are we going to continue doing that? Or are, are we going, what are we going to do about these kids that don't pass and have to be, take more PE? And then the second line on here is the one that looks different to me. It says if they've passed the fitness gram, it looks to me like they're only taking one year of PE in that model. They're taking 9th grade and then we're exempting 10th and 11th, and then they're getting a permanent exemption in 12th. So that is a change. That's one of, that would be a change. And the other thing that would be a change if we wanted, although I don't know that we can decide whether or not to do it since it's ed code, is what we do with the kids that don't pass the fitness gram. So, so basically what you're asking us is do we want to, do we feel like the direction is to continue what we're doing? Change it so that kids only have one year of PE? And what to do with the kids that don't pass the fitness gram?
Yep, my recommendation is that we try to comply with education code as much as possible. And that is reflected in the sample policy here presented to you tonight. So the, the two cases that you pointed out, yes, it is entirely possible that a student passing the fitness test in 9th grade would not have to take PE anymore. Conversely, a student at the bottom row who does not pass the test in either of the two years that we might offer it would be taking PE again at 11th grade until finally the student would qualify for the permanent exemption. However, that bottom line, that directly relates to this language that where we, where we left off our discussion. I pointed out on page 34 that bold italic sentence that Mr. Jordan and I crafted. We were thinking that we were doing a good thing for students by having them take another year of PE. And then during that junior year, that they would apply for the permanent exemption. However, we could write that so that students could apply for the permanent exemption as soon as they turn 16 years old, having completed 10th grade, which would mean they may not have to take PE at the junior year. Okay? So the, again, as I'm presenting that to you, the, what I'm recommending is that we try to comply with education code. Which is, the, the, the bottom line is, we've got to provide 400 minutes every 10 days, grades 9 through 12, unless students qualify for exemptions as provided in education code. And so that's what I am recommending that we do. So it will involve changing practice to greater or lesser degrees. And to the extent that it would change practice, I don't, Rick, maybe you could describe that? The extent that these recommendations would, would change current practice?
I don't know that we'd see a dramatic impact at, at the beginning. You know, if we started to see a number of students that passed the fitness gram and, and then took the two-year exemption and then asked for the permanent exemption. And so they only ended up taking one year of PE, that would be a, a change. I think what we'd, we'd see those kids whose parents are paying to, to take the BYU classes, they would have to stop.
What is BYU?
Bringon University offers an online program, very extensive high school classes. A range of, of, of classes.
They offer an online PE class.
Right. It's, it's monitored, you know, there, it's signed off. Kids can. So we, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of kids that do it in a, a number of, of different ways.
And it qualifies for the 50% of rigorous exercise or activity.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Jordan, when you say a lot, how many kids do you think do that?
Oh, I would say that, well, gosh, Monica would be the better one to, to answer that. I think that we've seen an increase in number of kids that have begun to do that because the, their schedules are so impacted.
And that's exactly what's happening.
Oh, Monica, I didn't even, sorry.
They, it's so impacted trying to get their GPAs and.
Monica, I hate to say this, can you come up to the mic, please? Thank you. We want to capture every word.
Just at, Mr. Jordan was speaking last night about we had the UC CSUs speak to our students. And the bottom line is the minimum requirements are not getting our students into the competitive CSUs in UCs. It's just not. Two years of language doesn't do it. They have to take three. Three years of math doesn't do it. They have to do, take four. Science, they really need to take four years of English, four years of science, four years of language, which is terribly impacting their schedule. And they're, they're trying to get into college and it's, it's nobody's fault. PE is super important. But the fact of the matter, if you want to go to college nowadays to a four-year college, you have incredibly impacted schedules. We have kids taking four or five AP courses trying to get that GPA up because the, you almost have to have a 4.0 to get accepted at a UC. And so kids are looking for options on health and safety and PE. The, the, I don't want to say the problem, but the class rank is, is very, very important. And the class rank is on their GPA and PE does not figure into that GPA for their class rank. So, and you know, kids know, they go in, in the 9th grade. We have kids in 9th grade who, and that's why we're trying to help them with the Navigator Program, plan out their four years so they can get where they want to get at the end of it. And, and this is where they're seeing these problems, getting all of these classes in and they're, they're looking for options.
So how many kids do you think are doing this alternative PE class?
Probably, we don't have very many right now. We, we have about, probably about six or seven.
And how do they find out about that? I mean, is that out there so all students know about it?
It's common knowledge, yes. Now, the problem with that is, again, equity, we're public education. And so the only students who can take the academic PE courses are students who have money. And it's, it's kind of like with our PE exemption too. We have kids who are in sports like, you know, gymnastics and some swimming courses, some crew sports, sports. And our policy is they can get a waiver. And again, those are the students who, who are, have a higher socioeconomic level. So that's some, we're public, we're public education facility. And that isn't fair to all students.
So why don't we offer an online PE course?
I don't know.
Right here.
And again, to, to the, so Barnum does meet their PE requirement. They can either take the active PE or they can take the academic PE. Any other questions?
Can I throw on my parent hat for a moment? Trying to give a parent perspective. My son is a, is a freshman next year in his sophomore year. I'm not going to have him take PE. He plays in jazz ensemble, he's in the drama program. He'll be in Spanish 2, accelerated English, world history, chemistry, and something else that won't allow him to take PE off the top of my head, I can't remember what that is. But he plays basketball and, and if he could fit in, he, he would be on the golf team right now, but he's doing this, this next play. And he wants to go to UCSB. It's been his dream for a very long time. And, and so I'm being very upfront with him that if you want to be competitive at that level, I don't want you to take PE. I want you to take PE through BYU so you could take an additional AP class. And, and like Monica is saying, it's a, it's an option that I have fortunately. But if, again, from, from just my parent perspective, I want him to have that option. And, and I have the information and that's what I'm going to do. Because it makes sense for, for my, my kid.
So from my parent perspective, my daughter graduated two years ago. She was 19th, ranked 19th in her class of 300 and some odd students. And she took two years of physical education. She took five AP classes. She was a varsity volleyball player for four years. So you could have a, I mean, everybody has a story. And I'm not here to say that I don't think we should have a waiver. I'm here to say that there are other options for, for people to get what they are supposed to be getting according to the ed code. And ed code says that we're supposed to have four years of physical education, but we've cut it down to two. So there are other ways to go about it. And I don't argue everything that Mr. Jordan has said and everything that Monica has said here tonight. I 100% believe in it. I am an avid teacher and I understand all of that. And I am pushing kids to take rigorous courses and to get everything that they need to be able to be competitive. So I can see both sides of the coin. But I know that students can get their two years of physical education and do everything else. I, I see, I've seen it happen. It's been happening all along the way. But the other thing that we forget is we have College of the Redwoods right here. Students can take physical education at College of the Redwoods. It's an accredited program.
I don't believe they can.
Yeah. Yeah, they can go take courses, they can take them in the afternoon or in the evening.
I thought that was one of the classes that they can't take.
Jordan took one. But, I mean, she took that and she took two years of PE here. But, so, I mean, I think that there are other options. And when I said that we should offer an online physical education program, we should offer online lots of programs. And we could offer an online physical education program. We have two really bright teachers who could design a course and teach it right here through Eureka High School. So there are lots of other out-of-the-box things that we could think of to maintain what we have. So the other little piece is that we're talking about that, the top 10% of the class that goes through Eureka High School when Mr. Jordan and I talk about our kids. And we talk about the people who wouldn't be able to afford the BYU classes. But there are a whole bunch of kids in between. And what we're doing is recreating a waiver for, for these two ends. And all these other kids in between maybe wouldn't benefit by that waiver. But they'll be doing it because every other person is doing it. And so if we create other ways for the two ends to be able to fit in what is required, then I think that we have met everybody's needs. And so I'm advocating for thinking out of the box. Let's think of some things that we can do to give everybody what they need here at our, an amazing, comprehensive high school that we have. Let's add to it, not take away.
Well, when I went to high school, we had four years of PE. And somehow 25 years ago, it all became two years of PE. And when I go on campus now and I compare the physical fitness of the students at Eureka High today to 30 years ago, it's scary. And I wouldn't be in favor of any thing that reduces the amount of PE, certainly. So that, that top line of those that pass the 9th grade, pass the fitness test in the 9th grade, only having one year of PE, I couldn't be in favor of that. The bottom line is something much more in tune with my thinking of requiring a third year of PE. But anything that reduces the number of years of PE, I, I couldn't vote for.
And I think that's what we're asking for is, is what's the board's direction for the district? If, so if I get into, and it's possible we get into that situation of, you know, I want to take a third year or a fourth year of language, but I have to take PE. You know, if we had language, do we, so we get some language in there about how then a, a student can be either to a, to a group to, to present that to and, and get an exemption. I hear what Stephanie's saying about one person making the, the decision. But there are going to be kids out there that are going to be put in a position to, to not take an additional course.
And for every kid that's inconvenienced by that, intending to go to CSU, there will be another 19 students that will take advantage of it just to get out of PE.
And, and, and that's possible. And again, I think it does get back to some of the other directions that we're trying to take the high school in terms of having kids complete CTE programs. And, and if we have kids that are taking a rigorous CTE series of courses, either completing a single one or completing multiple ones, again, we get into that tough decision. Do I take an advanced welding class or PE?
Well, I think, I feel the same way. I don't think I could vote for any less PE. But one thing that I would be really interested in is if there is a, a task force or a group of, you know, Stephanie or whoever that wants to look into how we would go about creating an online PE course. That would be really interesting.
You know, I think nobody's recommending that we do less, that we provide less PE than what we're currently providing.
Yes, you are, by line number two.
Well, less than what we're currently providing, which just doesn't happen to meet.
Well, line number two is less than we're currently providing because it's only one year of PE. And currently, kids take two.
I probably will be the, the sole supporter of line two. It's not 30 years ago. There are students though that are physically fit, that do a lot of act. There are students though, that are physically fit, that do a lot of activities, that are engaged, and I see policy as a way to allow flexibility for all students. I'm not looking at a policy that ties the hands of the high school or students. There are so many needs out there. I'm leaving line two in, and the last line, and I'm wondering about the policy that we're being presented, does it include all of these?
The bottom line, as the bottom line is written, that a student would be granted the permanent exemption only as a senior, relates directly to that sentence in bold italics on the bottom of page 34. So that if we were to remove that sentence, and if we were to only go with the CSBA recommended line, which is one sentence, then that means that upon turning 16, a student may be exempted from PE, so that it would change the bottom line in the chart to show that the exemption would occur at the junior year as well as the senior year. That would be, that would be one, how that sentence relates to the chart. But again, the reason for bringing the policy, as Mr. Jordan is saying, is to ask for guidance from the board in terms of direction and philosophy. And I also want to point out that these exemptions are always with the word "may", that the superintendent or designee may exempt a student, that's the wording that we see here. And so, what we're asking you to do is to formalize these options that are presented in education code, for us to formalize those as our guideline for how we provide physical education here at Eureka High School and at ZO Barnum, following education code. And with the knowledge that is worded as the permissive "may" rather than "shall" on most of these phrases.
And I wonder, and I don't know how hard it would be to get, since we've been doing the test for, what, several years now, right? Four, five, or something like that?
More than that.
Would it be able to, is there any way to sort of survey, if we look back over the last three or four years, how many students might have been eligible for the waiver under line two, where they would have been able to only have one year of PE had they passed the high school exit? And then the other question would be, how many students that didn't pass the fitness test after two attempts, and right now, they don't take anymore?
Right. No one's ever gotten two attempts. Because they aren't being mandated to take a second year and be tested, because there's no accountability right now.
So I thought all students had to take two years.
Well, they have to take two years, but they don't get tested in their second year. They're tested in the ninth grade. They only get tested in the ninth grade because, currently because of our scheduling, if we follow what ed code says, they're supposed to, if they don't pass, they're supposed to be in a second year. But they aren't, it's by chance that they get put in if they don't pass. There's been no list of students, these are the students who have not passed and they need to be enrolled in physical education, that has not happened at Eureka High School.
But within, before they graduate, they have done the second year.
Yes, but they haven't been retested.
Okay. I was starting to get confused.
Because the testing is just to see if they didn't have to continue, so once they're continuing, testing is irrelevant.
The testing is mandated?
They would be put into a class, specifically to upgrade their level of fitness, and then they would be tested in that class.
But at the 10th grade doesn't apply, or after the 10th grade wouldn't apply.
Yeah, it hasn't.
But if we want to go with a strict reading of the law?
Then it should have, right.
Because we could have a student who's met the graduation requirement, but not having passed the fitness program could be in PE all four years.
And until they pass.
In addition to the actual physical activity, the PE classes are also part, the health and safety are taught, is part of?
No, it's not related to this.
So, it's only the physical activity part?
No. Our physical education program is more than just physical activity. We have one day in the freshman year where the students actually are, we're having that, they go into a classroom setting and we talk about nutrition and the education part, as well as the whole parts of whatever unit we're in, and so there is more than just that part.
Is that a significant amount of the PE program?
20%.
20%. So you're talking about the, passing the physical test in ninth grade and exempting out for the remaining three years, it's only a physical test? It does not test them on anything that they might learn in the other 20% of your PE classes?
Correct. That's factored into their grade in physical education, they have their cognitive or skills.
It was my understanding, when this came, this business of not passing the physical fitness test in the ninth grade, came before the board, and it can't have been more than two or three years ago, that change in the law, that they were required to take physical education every year until they passed it, and the only thing was that it could not keep them from graduating. Could not prevent them from graduating. So, it seems to me, if you don't pass it in the ninth grade, you don't pass it in the 10th grade, you don't pass it in the 11th grade, you don't, you have to take it in the 12th grade, you can still graduate, but you're still taking it, and that's what the law said, and I didn't, I've never ever seen any choice whether or not you do this or not do this.
That is the law.
But that is what we were told when that, when it came to us a couple of years ago when we all sat here and went.
The current reading, however, in education code, it does not require, it does not state that a student has to continue to take PE if they don't pass the fitness test.
Yes, it does.
It states that by passing the fitness test, we may grant an exception.
No, it's SB 78 or 601, and it specifically states that they do not pass, they need to continue to stay in physical education.
Someplace I read that, not too long ago.
We had that happen, and it was, it was just like Fran was saying, and what happened, we had these students who, they didn't pass their fitness test in ninth grade, and they took it in 10th and didn't pass it. And then the parents were being told, those kids, you're going to have to keep taking it, and they went to the state and they, it was presidential, because they weren't passing it because of the body mass, and I think you guys probably, because we were really strictly following that policy, but then, but it was, we got the word from somebody higher up that that policy was important.
Maybe we'd better check on that before we make any, any.
I would suggest that we table this item until we get clarification, we're hearing too many opinions, and I do not know the facts.
And I do have one question, and I don't know if we can do this, or if we want to, but maybe there's a way to limit the exemptions to only those students adopting a really rigorous academic program. And I don't know how the wording would be done in so many AP classes or so many academic classes, and, so those students that are, that are not taking that rigorously.
Again, that's prejudicial.
Well, you know, everything's prejudicial, prejudicial.
Well, the only way I could think you could limit the exemptions would be on their physical fitness, because that's what it's about, not how rigorous they are in other courses.
Well, we will, as was suggested, I appreciate that, because we're really in a quandary here. And so we'll get the folks together who have the resources, the knowledge, and we'll come back at another time with some more clarity.
If I can just go on one thing on behalf of the student, it sounds like the students are trying to get out of PE, and they're not, they want to take PE, they enjoy the classes. And we have a huge waiting list for students to take zero period. If we had a bunch of zero periods, and you guys know, they want to take zero period PE, and that's a good, healthy practice. When we go to the gym as adults, when we go to the gym, we usually go before work or we go after work. And that's what they really want, they're not trying to get out of PE, they like it. A lot of students take it for a lack.
There are some that like it, there are many that don't.
There are, that's true.
And those adults that go to the gym either before or after work are a small minority of the adults. So, what you said is true, but for only a small minority of students. But let's bring this back at another time.
I think it is a good idea to try to come up with some way to, for kids to maybe apply for an exemption, and maybe one of the board members wants to sit on that, on that group to hear the whole range, because.
No way.
Because it's, because it's not just kids taking AP courses. Again, I would take you back to students that are taking a period of math support and a period of English language support. And those kids can do it for two years. And that's clear direction, I think, that we've gotten from the board to do that. And so we just have these, these things that are bringing up.
I'd like to congratulate you, thank you for making us think a little bit harder about a very complex issue that could be dealt with in simplistic ways. This particular line that's in bold italics, I don't care how I read it, I don't get what you're saying it says out of it. I, I'm not comfortable with that wording.
Okay, so we'll be bringing this back at another agenda. And we'll move on to L 22, budget update.
Only have one more.
Graduation.
Oh, L 22, high school graduation.
Nice try.
Yes. This one is being presented for the board consideration, because there is a new law that allows the graduation requirements to include a career technical education course in lieu of visual performing arts or oral languages. And at the same time that we bring the proposed board policy, we can see it is structured in a similar way. If you look at the first page, that would be 40, the one right behind 46, the first white page, there, the current Eureka City Schools Board policy contains the following two statements that are shown below. Total credits to obtain a diploma for Eureka High and for ZO Barnum. On page 47, we can see that there are three courses in English required, and current ECS board policy requires four courses in English, and staff recommends keeping these requirements. So what we're doing is we're looking at the model policy provided by CSBA, and item number one calls for three courses, and we're recommending we keep four, because that's our current policy. The model policy then requires two courses in mathematics, which is consistent with our current policy. Number three, two courses in science, again, consistent with current policy. Number four, three courses in social studies, which is consistent with current policy. On the next page, beginning in the 1213 school year, education code 51225.3, as amended by AV 1330, authorizes the board to include a course in career technical education as an alternative to the visual or performing arts or foreign language course requirement for high school graduation. And our staff is supportive of this addition to the graduation requirements.
What is a career technical education? What kind of class is that?
These are a lot of our HROP classes, and so I spoke briefly about welding, good example, metals one, welding one, welding two. That would qualify, the metals one class could qualify to meet this graduation requirement.
I wasn't sure of that either, so I went online and found this California Career Technical Education Model Curriculum Standards, and it has all of the different areas and the different classes that meet that criteria, and it looks like we have quite a few.
Yeah, a whole.
Already.
Yeah.
There's agriculture, there's all different areas, but I'll let you look at that. Scott.
And, okay, any other questions about the, so number five there on page 48, this is the change, the major change that we're asking the board to consider, is, would read one course in visual or performing arts, foreign language, including American Sign Language, or career technical education. That would be the one addition to our current policy. There's one other change that we're asking the board to consider, that I want to also briefly point out, number six addresses physical education. We're not out of that one, are we? So our graduation requirements include two courses in physical education, and then there's the statement, unless the student has been otherwise exempted pursuant to education code, which is what that all previous discussion was about.
So moving on to number seven.
Number seven. And I want to point out that current ECS board policy includes health and safety, and staff recommends keeping this requirement. Finally, at the bottom, current ECS board policy includes something called Careers 2000, a five semester unit requirement for all freshmen, and staff recommends eliminating that as a graduation requirement.
What did it used to be? What was the Careers 2000? Was?
This was, you know, generated out of the Clinton policy, the Goals 2000, that turned into the, sort of the working policy, which was the Careers 2000. Eureka High School some time ago adopted a series of classes, had it be a graduation requirement, and the best existing example of it now is the MIT program, the Manufacturing Technology Program, where kids get a cross section of possible careers and do some hands-on work within those, within those career areas. And so in, currently in MIT, a student could get a six weeks of auto, six weeks of metals, six weeks of wood, architecture, robotics, and electrical wiring, I think is the sixth one. There was a series of different possible selectives that ninth graders could take, and those had shrunk over the years. And we were getting into, again, this conversation about pushing kids into, beginning their freshman year, taking A through G requirements, and this was a semester course, and we didn't really have a good course to go opposite of it, and so fewer and fewer kids started taking it. In my, in my first year, really the only true selective that existed was, at that time, MIT. And we had parents that were upset that their kids were being forced to take a course that their children had no interest in, and eventually we just got away from it. We went a year of taking like a visual and performing arts survey class, we do offer ag surveys still, which could fit under that umbrella. But really, we've not had enough elective sections available to offer this in that semester structure, and it was just a terrible mess to try to get them an additional course the second semester to even out their schedule. And so it's really been a number of years since we've been doing it, and it's languished here in board policy, and we've got a group of kids coming forward in the class of 2012 that took selectives, the majority of them, but there are some that didn't, and in the class of 2013 for sure, the vast majority of the kids didn't take a selective. And so, they just weren't available. And so, we're asking them to remove what at the time was a wonderful program, but it's really was the foundation that has led to this whole CTE push and the series of courses that we have. And we've seen kids be, students be more interested in taking a specific art course, for example, rather than the art survey course. You know, they've got an idea that I want to do two dimensional art, and that's what I'm going to do. I don't want to bounce around and take some ceramics and some calligraphy and some sculpture. I want to, I want to draw.
So not only are you saying that this is rather obsolete as it is now, but we haven't offered enough of a variety to make this work, and now we have juniors that have not taken it, and it's still a graduation requirement?
Yes, that's what we're trying to get it off the books before we really get.
I get it.
Into a.
Well, is this, does this mean that we are, are we no longer offering MIT?
We are offering MIT, and we do have a strong number of kids that go into that program. And we, and we do have a strong number of kids that go into that program, but we're not offering near the, near the right.
So would this eliminate MIT?
No.
Okay.
You don't have to take this just to graduate.
But we'll still be offering it? Because I think MIT is a great program. I don't want to see that go away.
No, it's, it's there.
MIT is good for kids that want to take it. When I was in high school, we had something similar with auto shop, wood shop, metal shop, architectural drawing. And the only thing good about that class for me was if I found out I didn't like any of those fields.
We're trying to, we're trying to push those kids in that accounting class that first year.
That's right.
On health and safety, is that a five unit requirement?
Yes.
But we don't say that here in the policy. Where we're talking five semester units with the Careers 2000. And is it specified as to what year they take health and safety?
Generally, it's sophomore year, but, uh, we have some freshmen that, that do take it. Uh, and then it's, this is another one of those courses that kids will take online as well, um, either through CR or through BYU because it's a semester course and it really conflicts with our year-long courses.
Well, and that's why I'm kind of getting to the point of asking why staff is recommending to keep this requirement.
It's a state requirement. The, the proportions of that.
And there was something that kids couldn't get their learner's permit without taking that class?
They can, they can. If, if they were to take the, the health class online, for example, that CR offers, um, they can do the driving portion, uh, through one of the commercial schools here in town.
So the health and safety has embedded in it other state requirements, is what you're saying?
Yes, unrelated to driver's ed, yes. If that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Yes.
But you can get driver's ed on, online. Because my son was old for his grade and of course wanted his license and didn't want to wait for health and safety. So we did the driver's ed part online, but he still had to take the class and still had to take the driver's ed stuff at school because he needed the health and safety part of it.
Right.
What is the other half of the year? What's the backside of health and safety?
Sometimes it's PE, sometimes it's a semester of, uh, one of the elective courses that we offer.
That's also the, the course. Uh, the state requires that, uh, once during middle school, once during high school, students, um, receive a short course on prevention of AIDS and HIV. And in Eureka City Schools, that is provided at eighth grade, science. And this 10th grade, health and safety is where that's provided.
Thank you.
Well, I could go along with your recommendations on numbers five and seven.
And then the rest of this policy you see on page 49 and 50 is consistent with existing, uh, policy, which you'll find towards the back of the packet as well, on page 60 and 61. Relates to providing some alternative means for students. It relates to the high school legs of examination requirement. Relates to supplemental instruction as needed.
What are we doing in that area right now? What kind of supplemental instruction are we doing for the kids that don't pass the, Cassie?
Many of those kids are in either the reading intervention classes that I was talking about or an ELD class or sometimes that's, that can be one in the same. Or they're in, um, they're in English class with a support class that goes along with it.
I was wondering how that, um, I know when I was on the site council, we, we dedicated some money for some special tutoring. Has that proven to be effective?
We've not had it. We didn't, it, it didn't come to fruition as we waited for the space to, to come. Actually, remember, we, we decided to, um, I'm trying to remember what we decided to do because we went into a, a couple of different models. We purchased.
Why did you try to do it during the school day instead of after school? So the kids would be more, you know, it would be at school already.
And we purchased some, some math software, um, which became part of the, uh, Algebra Essentials class. And, and ideally, what we had planned at that time was that it would be in the Navigator Lab, which has just recently come online and, and be part of the after-school tutoring.
So this, you have any other questions?
My last question on mathematics. Oh, it's algebra one's in there. That, that was the question. Can I see it now?
So can this come back on consent?
I think so.
I just wanted to ask one question because when I read this, I didn't know if we do this or not. Do we give that certificate of completion?
Yes.
Okay. So you can bring it back on the consent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
L 23, budget update.
And I know everybody's looking forward to numbers at this point. That being said, there's, there's no burning issue that needs to be talked about. It really was a recap of the handout that happened, um, at the previous board meeting. So if it's the forge's pleasure, we can go forward tonight or table it to another meeting.
It's 9:30. I think we can table it. And the board will recess to close session.
Enjoy your guys' circle jerk.
So were you told you couldn't let your children play?
Yeah, gave me a ticket to boot, I don't know what I.